Scallops, Ensenada White Clams, which are really hard to find. Fresh Pacific Oysters. Look at that. Every Wednesday after 3:00 P.M., we're doing $1.00 oysters and $3.00 beer at every location. Corona, Chino Hills, and Uppercut.
Thank you for coming so well. I'll see you again.
Also, ShopDine approved.
Welcome to the City Park Pop-Up Event.
Doing the community outreach is a great way to get everybody involved.
The city is so focused on getting everybody's input because this is a place that's going to be a city community center. And making sure it's the right fit for everybody, I think, is important. So I love this pop-up event.
It's just exciting to see that there's new changes that are coming to Corona. The city park, we want to see it look beautiful.
This park was actually our first introduction to Corona, and it almost dissuaded us from moving here.
It's very exciting to see what possibilities of the future city park could be.
Yes, exciting.
Corona has a lot of good culture here, and looking forward to having a center place to celebrate that.
We're excited about the rebirth of the city park. Parks have been here for over 100 years. A space for the community. Now more parks can be a chance for a rebirth of the city park to be timeless.
I grew up in those parks. I'm glad to see all the different clams.
I love that we get a say in it.
So it's not just, hey, we're the government officials, the city officials, making the decisions, you know, with this budget and saying, hey, we want to incorporate your ideas, your thoughts. So to have something like this.
This is nice that they're letting the community choose their park and take a look at all the models and be part of it.
I'm seeing more and more now. The city council, Parks and Recs are more concerned with what the residents want. It's all about the residents now in Corona. And how do we make Corona more beautiful and more attractive and more fun to come to?
I love it. I think it's great. It really allows you to see what they're really planning on doing.
The presentation is good. Absolutely. I think the city does need something like this.
The main thing is you're listening to the people.
I'm excited to hear what Dad says. I've been very concerned for a long time. We try to add constructive criticism, but it looks like they're doing a great job, and we're really excited for that groundbreaking to start.
I think everybody put a lot of thought into this. I am grateful to have a community that cares.
I think that they'll still feel like city parks with the trees. I love that they're trying to preserve the trees, but think of activities for all kids of all ages. So it's awesome.
Glad to see the city, you know, tried to lead an effort here. I think we'll all benefit from it. It'd be great, good for the community.
Looking forward to it. I hear it's going to be done by 2027. That gives us time, too, to continue to figure out how we can bring the programming over to the parks.
It's going to be a great addition to our city, not only for our businesses, our children, and our families. Good job, Corona, and I'm looking forward to the progress and the implementation of the park.
Just want to thank the city and Parks and Rec for all their work. They're doing a great job.
Come out, people. You guys show up. That's the only way this changes. Thank you, guys.
You can give your opinions. You can also do so online. You can do on our Facebook, our actual website, anywhere you like. You can take a better look at them and ask questions and give us your feedback. Thanks a lot.
I was born and about a year later moved to Corona, and I've lived here ever since. So there's a sense of pride that kind of comes with working and serving the city that I grew up in. I wanted to be a cop when I was really young, actually, but I still explored, like, other educational avenues. So I ended up going to college and playing sports. So I think the team atmosphere and, like, the structure and, like, having brothers and sisters, like, outside of your family is just, like, a really good feeling to have. And being able to all, like, work hard for, like, the same goal has always been something that I feel like I've needed throughout my life. People become police officers to kind of give back to their community, even if it's not the community you necessarily live in. There's always a good sense of pride that comes with doing the right thing for people and helping people who can't help themselves. The city of Corona is pretty unique in the fact that our community actually really likes us and they support us. Pretty much anywhere you go, you're going to have somebody thanking you for your service. Just that reassurance on a day-to-day basis is good motivation for especially the negative times or the negative calls that you might come from. It just kind of lifts your spirits and keeps you motivated.
Without us out here, I think it'd be dark. It'd be a dark place, literally.
My name's Francisco. A lot of people know me as Poncho. I work in the street maintenance department, and I am the streetlight technician for the city of Corona. I handle the maintenance and the repair of streetlights in Corona. We have approximately around 12,000 streetlights, and this is where I do my work. The favorite part about my job, being able to see my work afterwards and knowing that I'm lighting up this city. I'm the one that maintaining them or repairing them, and with the help of my team and my coworkers, of course. Yeah, no, I enjoy, I love working for the city of Corona because, one, I've been here for so long.
Good evening, and welcome to our city council meeting. We'll start with the invocation from Pastor Shannon Scott of Grace Baptist Church. Will you please stand?
Before I start, just want to say thank you to all of you for all that you do in our community. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be gathered together tonight as a community, as a city. Lord, we recognize our need of you in our everyday lives and all that we do. We're very mindful of this time of year as school comes to a close and some transition takes place in people's lives. Lord, we pray that you would be with every decision that's made as young people get ready for college, maybe life outside of the home they live in now. And, Lord, we just pray that you would guide and direct each and every one of them, help them to make good decisions, true decisions, and, Lord, that they would go on to something that would be productive and fruitful, Lord, for whatever community that they're in. We pray for families as people separate. We're mindful of our elderly that are in our communities tonight, that maybe some of them are lonely. We pray that you would be with them this evening and that they would find some care and some people certainly gathered around them for that. Be with our hospitals tonight. We pray that there'd be no emergencies that would take us away. Lord, that, Lord, you'd be with our police officers and our firefighters and all that they do, keep them safe as well. And, Lord, with the business that's here, I ask you to help the decision-makers and those that have influence and everything that's said and done. May you lead, guide, and direct. Give us wisdom and discernment for these things. We thank you for all you do, in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Scott. Okay, we have a pledge of allegiance. That's going to be done by our mayor's youth council tonight, right? Why don't you come on up? Who's going to take the lead, Sarah? Who wants to lead us? There you go.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, I think you're next, aren't you? Let's take the, I'm pretty sure you are. All right. Well, since you're already up here, I'd like to invite the 2020, 2024, 2025 Mayor's Youth Council to the podium. So you're here, so good job, you guys. This is, uh, this is kind of new for me this time because I was mayor in 2020 when COVID hit, and we weren't able to have a mayor's youth council. So I really wanted to just take advantage this time around by attending a lot of their meetings and getting to know a lot of them. And we're in good hands with our future with these kids, I tell you. So I'm just going to read one of the recognitions. And I also wanted to let you know that you have recognitions from not only the city, but from Congressman Calvert's office, from Assemblymember Leticia Castillo's office, and Senator Sabrina Cervantes's office. So that's pretty cool. So I'll read just the one. "The city council in the city of Corona, California is proud to recognize in this case for participating in the 2024-2025 Mayor's Youth Council. Whereas, the 2024-25 Mayor's Youth Council is comprised of 14 community-minded local high school students who want to improve the lives of young people through city government. During their term on the Mayor's Youth Council, the members were provided with access to the city council and the city management team to become more knowledgeable and gain more knowledge in leadership and civics. And whereas, the city council recognizes the importance of including youth in public policy and providing them with experiential learning opportunities to keep them engaged in local government throughout their lives, as such, the Mayor's Youth Council focuses on leadership and the direction in which our community is heading. And whereas, the 2024-25 session of the Mayor's Youth Council consisted of an effective curriculum that included learning about the city's organizational structure and the operations of various city departments, touring city facilities, and engaging in community service. In addition, the Mayor's Youth Council also has the opportunity to offer their unique perspectives on real city issues. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Steiner, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize the Mayor's Youth Council for their dedication to this program and commend each other for their hard work and commitment in serving on the 2024-25 Mayor's Youth Council." There's a few of the kids who weren't able to be here tonight because they are at the Circle City Center right now getting scholarships. So that's pretty amazing, too. And then I also wanted to just thank Angela Nieto, who heads up this program. And then we have our beautiful, yep. And then Sarah, Sarah, you were doing, you did a great job as intern. Thank you for coming back. You were a graduate of the youth council two or three years ago, right? So, add a girl. So I'm going to ask you, Sarah, to pass these out to everybody. And you can, don't have to do it at this moment. And then would you like to say anything? Or Sarah, anybody? You've been in these chambers once, and we were practicing. You want to try it? All right, add a girl.
I'd like to thank Ms. Nieto for just all the guidance she gave us. Truly, this was such an amazing experience that we all really enjoyed. And I think we all learned a lot about the inner workings of the city and just behind the scenes. And truly, like, you provided us with such a great experience that we'll always remember. So thank you so much for that.
Add a girl. I'm impressed. Good job. So why don't we get a picture in front of the podium? How's that sound? Cool? Thanks, guys. I'm going to round the applause. All right. Now we have a recognitions for our Citizens Academy for the Spring 2025 Cohort graduates. I'm going to call up, or I'm going to at least mention their names. Karen Alexander, Tom Alexander, Tamara Aquino, Pamela DiAgostino? DiAgostino, sorry. Josh Dagler, Alan Fote, Monica Guerrero. You guys can please come up, too. Derek Gutierrez, Vanessa McDonald, Genevieve Newlin, Andrea Perez, Sherry Phillips, Jennifer Ward, and Flor Weber. I'm sorry if I messed up any of your names. All right. All right. Hey, how are you? I'll get you hugs in a second. All right, you guys, let's, uh, quiet down, huh? Okay. Karen Alexander's not here, but this first one is hers. So I'm going to just read this. "The city council of the city of Corona, California is proud to recognize and congratulate Karen Alexander, wherever she may be, for successfully completing the city of Corona Citizens Academy program. These are individuals that have voluntarily taken on the responsibility of getting a closer look at local government. The goal of the Citizens Academy is to help residents become more knowledgeable, engaged citizens. The information and the resources provided will enable them to have an increased understanding of the city's organizational structure and the operations of various departments that impact the quality of life in Corona, presented this day by me." This is something that's also very special to me. When I was running for office back in 18, one of the residents that I had met with had brought up that his city where he worked had a Citizens Academy. And then he was telling me about it, and I thought, what a wonderful thing to try to bring to Corona, not just to get more people engaged with what we actually have going on in the city, but to also just kind of groom future council, city council, and planning commissioner, and library, and Parks and Rec trustees, just to make them feel more confident about running for office. And so I'm so happy that this program is up and running. How long's, is this their fourth class?
Maybe I can do it.
Third? Third, so. Six! Yeah, that's amazing. And let's just keep it going. And I think, Tamara, you were going to say a few words? Why don't you say a few words on behalf of the academy?
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, council members, and citizens of the city of Corona. First of all, I would like to thank Assistant City Managers Justin Tucker and Nicole McDaniel and all the department heads for all their hard work and dedication to the city and to the Citizens Academy program. It has been my privilege to participate in this year's Citizens Academy. I have been fortunate to call the city of Corona my home for nearly 25 years, and all this time, I have loved the city. However, after Citizens Academy, I can say I love it even more. This experience allowed me to see a true example of transparency and a government that puts their citizens first.
I'm proud of our city, and I'm proud to be part of a group of individuals that are equally committed to the success of the city. Community, emphasis on unity, is what makes the city the best place to live. So to my cohorts, Genevieve, Vanessa, Derek, Tom, Karen, Pam, Sherry, Monica, Andrea, Jen, Alan, Flor, and Josh, some of them are not here today, but I hope we can stay connected moving forward and remind each other of the many reasons why we belong here. Thank you.
Nicely done. And the city actually has some goodies for each of you. So when you get a chance, can you pass it out to everybody? And then also, let's see. You got a recognition from, see, that one's from, oh, Senator Cervantes's office along with the city recognition. So how about you have the pleasure passing all those out? So let's get a picture. How about that in front of the podium? Notice to me? Okay, I'm going to take this one out of order. We are going to do the proclamation for the Water Safety Awareness Month. I'd like to invite Cheryl Candelaria, founder of the Foundation of Anoxic Injury Recovery Fair, to the podium to receive the proclamation. Hello, welcome. She want to come up? She's more than welcome. Hi, sweetie.
That's what they call that, Poppy Month?
All right.
Or water.
So Water Safety Awareness Month, May 2025. Whereas drowning is the leading cause of injury-related death for children ages one to four, with approximately 11 children drowning daily, and twice that number experiencing non-fatal drownings, often resulting in life-changing anoxic brain injuries. And whereas, increased public awareness, education, and proactive prevention measures during Water Safety Awareness Month can significantly reduce drowning incidents of the city of Corona and beyond. And whereas, the Foundation for Anoxic Injury Recovery Fair was founded to support families impacted by anoxic injuries, educate the community, and empower caregivers through prevention, prevention education, particularly emphasizing water safety. And whereas, Fair is committed to promoting essential water safety practices, including layers of protection, infant swimming resources, ISR, swim lessons, vigilant adult supervision, and heightened pediatrician and caregiver awareness. Now therefore, I, Jim Steiner, for the city of Corona, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 25th as Water Safety Awareness Month in the city of Corona and recognize the foundation of anoxic injury recovery for its vital efforts in advocating for child safety and drowning prevention in our community. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much for recognizing this important, what I think is very important, month. And, you know, 10 years ago, my daughter Harper here, she had a non-fatal drowning. And after, you know, she was the fourth kid that I had, and I took all of my kids to their regular appointments with the pediatricians, and not once did anyone ever tell me that drowning was the leading cause of death and injury in children one to four. And so over the last 10 years, I've learned a lot about water safety and anoxic brain injury. And I've been on support groups, and there's so many parents like me who had a lot of misconceptions that we were keeping our children safe only to find that we weren't. And so this year, I just decided I'm going to, you know, start making it my mission to bring awareness and make sure that no parents, no parents ever can say that they didn't know. And so I'm partnering with, we're partnering with pediatricians, and she's a, has stage fright. Hi, you! And so that's what we're doing. We're spreading awareness, partnering with pediatricians so that they can be making sure to tell their people about how to keep their children safe. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. What you're doing is incredible. Last one. All right. Poppy Month. Can all these, tell these ladies that are right back there? I'd like to invite Joe Dominguez, American League Women's Auxiliary, to the podium to receive the proclamation. All right, all right, all right. So we have a proclamation. Poppy Month, May 2025. Whereas, America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And whereas, millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle. And whereas, a nation of peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. And whereas, the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars. And whereas, the Joe Dominguez American League Women's Auxiliary, Post 742, has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through their distribution of the memorial flower. The city council presents this proclamation. And you were going to say a few words?
Thank you. The red poppy is a symbol of sacrifice in honor of those soldiers that have served and died in our country. The poppy program is rooted in its connection to the Western Front of World War I, where the flower was seen growing amidst the graves of fallen soldiers. The poppy became the official memorial flower of the American Legion family on September 19th, 1920. The American Legion Auxiliary was given complete charge of the National Poppy Program in 1924, and since then, has had a longstanding tradition of using the red poppy as a symbol of remembrance and to support veterans, active-duty military, and their families. The monies collected from poppy donations are used to support various veteran programs, such as the National Veterans Creative Arts Festival, honor flight missions, addressing food insecurity among various military bases for service members and their families, and to assist disabled veterans with medical and financial needs. Please join us in wearing a red poppy, not only on National Poppy Day, but also throughout the year. You are all invited to join us in placing flags on the markers of our fallen military who are buried at Sunny Slope Cemetery on Rampah here in Corona on Saturday, May 24th, at 9:00 a.m. And you are all also welcome to attend our 20th Memorial Day Service, which will be held on September 26th at the same location, 9:00 a.m. Auxiliary Unit 742 would like to thank the mayor and city council members for their continued support and recognition for our poppy program. Thank you.
All right. So before we take our picture, we, as a council, also wanted to recognize the American Legion 742 Women's Auxiliary for their generous donations to the Senior Sinner and Military Banner Program. Whereas, the Women's Auxiliary set the standard for excellence through their service, dedication, and commitment to the community. And whereas, the Women's Auxiliary generously donated $1,000 to each of these programs. Their support of the Senior Sinner and Military Banner Programs allow us to continue to fulfill our mission and serve all people in our community each year. And this is also signed by me on behalf of the entire city council. Now we can get a picture. Now, we can get a picture. Hey Sylvia, did I ever convene open session?
You didn't.
Should we?
Yes.
That's what I figured. I'm going to convene open session, Sylvia. Let us know what we got to do.
Individuals wishing to address the sitting council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the city council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communication, and once called to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Mayor, there were two revisions to the agenda. Item 6.18, the staff report, Exhibit 8 and Exhibit 9 were revised. And Agenda Item 11.4.4B was removed from the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edwards. Were there any speaker cards from the public, any of the recognitions or proclamations?
We do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council actions. The items used, the items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. And we have a couple of recusals. Ms. Casillas?
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself from 6.15. I live in that district.
And Mr. Speak?
Recusing on 6.16, because I live in that zone.
Okay. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any of these consent items for discussion?
I have 6.7. And 6.14.
Okay. None, Tony? You're good? Jackie? Okay. Ms. Edwards, were there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we did not receive any speaker cards for the consent calendar.
Okay, then can I get a motion on all items except for 6.?
Take it back. 6.8, not 6.7.
Okay. Can I get a motion for all items except for 6.8 and 6.14?
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Councilmember speak.
Okay, and that passes 5-0. Councilmember speak. 6.8 is yours.
I just wanted to point out that 6.8, though we only had two bidders, they were very, very close, which is always a very good sign that whoever put this together did a great job. And I just wanted to publicly say that. I know that, that sometimes we get wildly differing bids, and that usually comes from a very, very good and concise scope. So, I just wanted to say it out loud and say thank you to staff.
And no speaker cards for that, Ms. Edwards?
We do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Then Wes, do you want to move that?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Tom and Wes, or Wes and Tom, I should say. Please vote. Okay, 6.14. Make sure this passes, which it does. 5-0, 6.14, Wes.
Yeah, I just, I didn't need a, Mr. Ellis, I didn't need a, a report. Just wanted to call out that, you know, Zone 19 is, is still, you know, struggling. And hopefully, at some point, I'm, I'm hoping to, to get together with a few members of the public to try and find a way to, to bring this back to us in a way that would carry forward. And I just, you know, wasn't looking for any, any change at the moment. Just wanted to make sure we mention that, because it is something that, that is impacting, you know, a large portion of the visible public that people can see. And want to make sure that, that folks know that it's, it's on my mind, and then trying to find a way to, to bring it back to y'all. So, we can get that moved forward and have it look better in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards, no speakers for that?
We do not have any speaker cards.
Do you want to move that, Wes?
Yes, sir.
Got a second, please? Wes and Tom, please vote. Okay, that item passes 5-0. We have communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have three speaker cards for communication from the public.
Okay, so three speakers. You can just come on up to the podium, and if someone's already up there, you can just sit close until they're ready. Hi, Sharice.
Hey.
There you go.
Being first is nerve-wracking. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharice, and I am the treasurer of the Friends of the Corona Public Library, and I am a proud public library trustee. It's my true honor to stand before you today and speak about the cornerstone of our community, our library. Libraries are more than buildings filled with books. They're sanctuaries of knowledge, creativity, connection, and opportunity. They serve everyone, from the youngest curious minds to lifelong learners. And they do so with open doors and open hearts. This past year, we've made tremendous strides in strengthening this vital resource. Thanks to the generosity of our supporters, we donated $47,000 to refresh the furniture in the Francis Aldama Martinez Community Room, a space that welcomes everything from speaking engagements like tomorrow evening's presentation on Mike Resmo, a Holocaust survivor, to storytimes, book clubs, and community celebrations. It's not just a room, it's a hub of shared experience. And now, with new furniture, it's a much more comfortable hub of shared experience. To inspire our youngest readers, we proudly launched our first annual Children's Reader Con. With a $5,000 donation, we brought authors face-to-face with young readers. The result? Sparks flew. We saw kids who once claimed they were allergic to books, suddenly asking for autographs and carrying stacks of them like mini librarians. That's what a great story and a great storyteller can do. We also reaffirmed our commitment to both tradition and technology by donating $20,000 for physical books, because nothing beats the sound of a cracking spine, unless it's mine. And $70,000 for Hoopla, our digital platform offering instant access to eBooks, audiobooks, movies, and more. Our digital platform also provides binge-watching of documentaries, as well as reading a mystery. And let's not forget the power of personal giving. Nearly $2,000 has been donated through our Adopt a Book Program. A beautiful example of how individuals can directly shape the shelves of this library and the true stories within it. It's kind of like literary matchmaking, only less awkward and way more satisfying endings. The Adopt a Book Program offers more than just physical books. It provides moments of connection, moments that stay with you. This past summer during the reading program, my daughter Savannah, who turned 10 today, found a new series to fall in love with, Heidi Heckelbeck. I'd never heard of it before, and it quickly became her literary obsession. Fast forward to the first day of school this year, and she went upstairs while I was in a meeting and grabbed the next book in the series. She opened the book, and she immediately started crying. And I wondered why. That's because the nameplate in the book said Dee Scott.
Hmm.
Sorry. Dee Scott was my mother. She passed away in 2017 after a long battle with pancreatic cancer. That book was adopted seven years ago, before my daughter even started reading. And so, through the Adopt a Book Program, it offered comfort on a day of high stress. So, with all that being said, the Friends of the Library was able to donate $150,000 to the library this year, and we are so proud to have done so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Sharice, for what you do.
Sharice, just to pass on to the, to the friends, how much we appreciate y'all and, and what you do. And, and I know that years past, you guys used to put together a, a little pamphlet that would show how much you've given to the library, not just in hours, because I think there's, that's one thing this community has, is a lot of really great people to volunteer. You guys, you guys give us money and, and things that impact the, the folks that use the library. And as a kid who used the library regularly, I, you know, it's a big spot in my heart. So, thank you and, and thank the, all the friends.
Yes. And happy birthday to Savannah.
All right, we got another speaker?
Wes, I want to say thank you for your restaurant recommendations on social media. Appreciate that. My name is Vincent Romo. I live in Corona here. I've been a resident for about five, six years, five years roughly, almost. And I decide that I'm going to run for California Assembly District 63. I love this place, and I want to make this place better. And the best way for me to do that is through argument and debate on the legislative floor. As my colleague back there, Becky Floyd, knows, I'm pretty fiery when it comes to argument and debate. I'm a history professor at Cypress College, and I'm hoping to take these skills and really support our community. I would be taking a massive pay cut to do this, but it's not about the money. The same way I serve as a football coach, flag football, high school football here at Santiago, and a Pony League baseball coach, it's not about money. It's about making our community better, but not only just for us. I live a beautiful life, and I'm very thankful for everything I have, my church, my, my family, St. Matthews, everybody and everything that is part of this community. I want to make it better for my children, so they have the opportunity to raise their families here in Corona as well. And I'm going to leave you with the primary core value of my campaign, and it's transparency. If some of you may know, I think some of you do know, that I've been posting videos every single day, and I'm going to post videos every single day all the way through the election. And when I'm elected, I'm going to run a class, if possible, where everybody will have access to me personally. Because one of the big challenges I see as the faculty lead for the Politics and Policy Club at Cypress College is there is no access to our higher politicians in the Assembly, nor in the U.S. Congress. And I'm here to change that. And it'll be completely transparent. Any questions you have, I am willing to speak anytime, anyplace, anywhere. And my passion doesn't come from anything other than for my love for this community, all the way down to where I got my first opportunity to be a professor at, at Mount San Yostote College, and every stop along the way that helped me get to where I am today, to be able to own my own home, to be able to raise my family, and all of that stuff. So, I'm not going to ask any of you to vote for me. Please, don't vote for me. Like I tell my students, do your research first. And I have provided every single position online, in video form, in written form, and I ask you to do your research. And if you think that I'm the best candidate for Assembly District 63, by all means, vote Romo. Go to votromo.com. You can find me everywhere else. Vote Romo. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. And again, I appreciate the restaurant recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Romo. Best of luck to you.
Any questions? Nothing?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
We have one more speaker. Colin?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Colin Markovich here on behalf of State Senator Sabrina Cervantes, representing the 31st District. Just wanted to take a moment to give folks a brief legislative update. First, wanted to preface my remarks by saying that we're just very honored to help recognize our student and local leaders. They are the folks who are going to make action here in our community. And I've had the pleasure of working with, with many of them, actually, and can just attest that they are all individuals with the true hearts of public servants. So, you've selected a good crop here today, and kudos to where kudos is due, to the mayor, to the city, to the city staff for helping to put this program together and uplift our local leaders in Corona. So, with all that being said, we'd like to provide a brief legislative update. As mentioned, one of Senator Cervantes's key bills this year is SB 4, which would create a missing and murdered indigenous persons program within the Department of Justice. As folks on the City Council may be aware, California has the fifth-largest native population and has the largest number of tribes out of any state in the country. And a large number of cases involving indigenous individuals who are missing or murdered remain unsolved. This is a difficulty for families who never received the closure of knowing what's happened to a loved one. So, SB 4 would create a commission within the Department of Justice to partner with our local law enforcement agencies and tribal entities to help resolve these cases at long last and give families the closure that they deserve. We look forward to continuing to work with our partners in public safety and with our tribes to deliver for our community, improve public safety, and make sure that we are able to protect our residents. That bill has passed out of the Senate Public Safety Committee unanimously, is now in Senate Appropriations, and look forward to keeping you all updated on that. I did also want to mention that Senator Cervantes recently did speak up on the floor of the Senate for representation on the California Transportation Commission for the Inland Empire. As folks on council may be aware, Commissioner Tavalloni was the only representative from the Inland Empire on the California Transportation Commission. He did pass away. And with his passing, there are now no longer any representatives from the Inland Empire on the California Transportation Commission. With California, with the Inland Empire having the largest number of road miles, the, I think 40% of all goods travel through our region, it's critical that we have somebody on the commission that understands the needs of our residents. And so, Senator Cervantes will continue to advocate for representation for our communities, for the Inland Empire at the state level. Those remarks are on our website, if you do want to take a look. And the last thing that I did want to mention is that Senator Cervantes is part of a number of caucuses in the legislature. The California Latino Caucus and the California Women's Caucus both have scholarships avail, or I should say, the California Legislative Latino Caucus Foundation and the California Women's Caucus Foundation both have scholarships available to our students. And so, if you know of anybody who is going to be applying for college, they're certainly welcome to apply. I will give those websites for the Latino Caucus Scholarship, that is C-L-L-C-F.org. And for the Women's Caucus Scholarship, that is W-I-C-L.us. We encourage all folks to apply, and certainly happy to answer any questions that folks may have. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there any questions real quick, or no?
I just have a comment. Thank you for the scholarships. I want to share it. But I also, please, thank the senator. We met with her recently, and she's now co-authoring SB 569 to help us with homeless encampment collaboration cleanup, is intended to help us, municipality cities work with Caltrans, to access Caltrans property to clean up homeless encampments. And so, we met with her, wearing my league hat, and asked her to sign on as a co-author, and she said yes. So, it's a big deal. Thank you.
That's great. And just want to say, please extend our thanks to the senator for, we definitely need somebody from the Inland Empire that understands our transportation issues on the, on the CTC. And, and, you know, Joe Chavalloni was an absolute legend. No one's going to be able to fill the guy's shoes. But there needs to be somebody from this region that understands what our, our challenges are, and to be able to share with the folks there that don't understand that we, we can't all drive, we can't all ride electric bikes. So, I appreciate it. So, please, please extend our, our thank yous for that.
Thank you, Colin, for those updates.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Edwards, were there any of the speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Okay, then let's move on to our public hearings. We have a conditional use permit 2023-0015 for the establishment of a religious facility, a mosque, within an existing 4,330 square foot residential dwelling on 1.37 acres located at 2460 South Main Street in the R-1-8.4, single-family dwelling residential zone. Does any, I believe this was a continuance item. Does any council member want a staff report on this item?
Just really quick, I didn't need a staff report. I actually had a really good conversation with the applicant and worked out some of the questions that I had, just to save us all time. I, I don't have any questions.
Thank you for doing that.
I actually want a staff report. I didn't see the planning commission, and I have some concerns.
Okay. To Ann Coletta, planning and development director, will present this item?
Thank you, and good evening. So, Jada Islamic Society bought some property over off of 2460 South Main Street, and their intent was to establish a religious facility for- intent was to establish a religious facility for the Shia denomination. The property does contain an existing 4,300-square-foot dwelling that they will be converting to a mosque in order for them to hold their prayer services as well as other miscellaneous activities. The dwelling unit, as I indicated, is just over 4,300 square feet, and it's on 1.37 acres. It is in the R1 zone. However, you can't establish a religious facility with a conditional use permit, which is the reason for this request. The property will be -- let me stop there. The applicant currently operates at our Corona Mall. They actually lease property from the city of Corona, and right now, this is where they are doing their prayer worship services. Those prayer times occur five times throughout the day, from sunrise to sunset. And the attendance within each prayer service does vary, so they can have nobody at this prayer service between those times, or they can have anywhere up to 10 people. Their largest prayer service is on Friday, and at that time, the applicant indicated that they have anywhere from 50 to 75 people on Fridays. The floor plan for the application that will occur on Main Street consists of a prayer hall, and that's going to be over 1,600 square feet. That is actually going to be the largest use within that building. And then they also have some reading rooms, a break room, and an office, and there's also an onsite garage. So the way we park facilities for religious institutions, we actually use the assembly area, which is the most conservative ratio, and that's what we've done here. So the prayer hall actually requires 67 parking spaces. And then on opposite use, those opposite rooms that are used when the prayer is not occurring, they actually use that same parking count, so we do not add more parking to that. It's basically an opposite time of the opposite use. So the site will be providing 68 parking spaces. This here is the site plan. Right now, you just have the house on the property. The applicant will need to come in, and they will be constructing the parking lot around the building, and that's what you see there. Their primary access will be from Main Street, and they will have one driveway for ingress and one driveway for egress. There is a driveway on Nanners Way, however, that is currently gated, and it will remain gated. That is only an emergency access only. So all of their main access will come off Main Street, which is actually a requirement of our municipal code. During the planning commission meeting, there was some talk about the site design, and what I'm showing you here is that the applicant has agreed to actually open up the drive aisle on the north side to allow people to drive straight through and go to the back of the property if necessary in order for them not to queue up on Main Street. So originally, it was shown as being closed, so when they come in and do the grading plan, they will actually be opening up that spot there to allow for through traffic. Really, the building is essentially the same. They're just going to clean it up, so you're really not going to see any visual difference. So this is just an example of what that will look like, and they will also be upgrading it with any ADA improvements and so forth. And then this here just shows you the current gates around the facility, showing how the area will be secured, and their patrons of the religious institution will actually have access. They will be using, like, fob keeps and access points, so they don't need somebody there. They will actually have access in and out of the building. And so with that, we are asking that you affirm the Planning and Housing Commission's decision.
Yeah, I do have some questions. So my only concern really was, how are folks going to get in and out? Because in my mind, it seems like the only way that they could enter would be if they were traveling southbound on Main and they make a right into the facility. They can't make a left into the facility if they were traveling northbound on Main from...
Main.
Main. And then exiting, they could only make a right, they can't make a left. So do we have to, I don't know, I don't think it's, I don't think we have to restripe, but do we have to put signs or -- that's my concern, is people getting in and out.
No. So it's basically as it exists today. The way that the road is designed, they will know their way into this facility, and they're going to know their way out of this facility. It's just like if we use a facility in Corona, and we know shopping has limited-term movements, we know which driveways to access. So their patrons of this facility will know which way they will need to travel on Main Street in order to get into the facility.
Okay. And then is there an audible call to prayer? And I don't know if the other mosque--
No, there is not. There is not. And you get a really good education, and it was really nice to hear from this group. But they said, you know, that call to prayer is historic when you would be out in the desert, and they would let people know this is what's happening. It's not something that they do in an urbanized environment where they have a building. Everybody knows when their prayer time is, and that's when they go in. They will only have audible inside the building, just like other religious institutions with a PA system.
Okay.
I just, I had one thing, but--
Can we go to public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to everybody?
One, I had one request, and we had talked about it during our meeting, but that I wanted to make sure we got into the record, that there's no pedestrian gate where that emergency gate is, because I know we talked about restricting parking, and I appreciate that, because we really, you know, we want to make it, you know, better for the community, and I know that not everybody obeys the law, and I'm very familiar with that. And just like, you know, the other mosque, we have people that park illegally, and the leadership of that mosque will tell me, give everybody a ticket. But I don't want to get to that point where we're having that. So I just want to discourage, I want to make sure we put in the record that there will be no pedestrian gate on Nanners. But other than that, I didn't have any notes, but thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, has the City Clerk's Office received correspondence or speaker cards from the public regarding this item?
Mayor, we did not receive correspondence or speaker cards for this item.
Public hearing is now closed. Tom, did you say you had something?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one question for Joanne, and it's a hypothetical, and I know how much you enjoy those. But let's just say the mosque gets wildly popular, and people love it, and come from everywhere and everywhere, and the parking does become a problem on Main Street. What would the city do at that point?
So they actually have to provide parking on-site, and there is not parking on Main Street, because there's a Class 2 bike trail right there. So this is when a religious institution realizes they probably outgrown a facility and will need to move on, which has happened in the city. We've had several churches start out very small and grow big. So that's exactly the situation here. They can also have the opportunity to work with Seventh Day of Venice to the south, because they have opposite service times to see if maybe they can strike a lease with them to use their parking. So these are all things for this congregation to look at in the future, should they need to. But they clearly understood that parking needs to be on their site, and they're clearly aware that they cannot park on Nanners, which is a local street.
I'm with you, and I would, I actually hope they grow and outgrow it and build a bigger mosque. But would the city send a letter, or would the police department show up, or?
Because it's a CUP, if we got complaints, yes, we would absolutely contact them, telling them they need to come up with a resolution and propose to us how they were going to solve their problem.
So there's ways to enforce problems, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
And we've also exchanged phone numbers, so I know if he has an issue, he'll be calling me, and if I have an issue, I'll be calling him as well, so we're good.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah, he's right there.
Could I ask him a couple questions?
Absolutely.
Come on up to the podium, sir. I don't want to seem ignorant, but I'm going to ask a question. In your religion, is it the same as the other mosque? Or, and I ask because they have some great celebrations that we all love to attend, and I don't know if you're--
Similar celebrations. So this is one of the three monotheistic religions, right? Christian, Christianity, Judaism, Islam. Same stories, different ways to get to God, if you simply put it. The difference between the Corona Mosque, so Corona Mosque represents 90% of the Muslim population in the world. They are called Sunnis. The Shiites around the world are only about 10, maybe 12% of the population, hence the difference in congregation size. Believe in the same book of God, the Quran, similar prayers five times a day, but obviously, you're talking congregation that might have 500 people at that time, but this might only have 50, because really, it is only 10% of the population.
Okay. So are they, are they different sects? Is that the right term?
Different sect, exactly. It's exactly a different sect, just like you would have, you know, so many different sects in Christianity.
Sure.
The two main sects in Islam is Sunnis and Shias. And then within those sects, there are many other sects.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Well, I look forward to learning the differences. We have a great relationship with the Corona Mosque, the Corona Islamic Society, so I'm hopeful that we have a great one with you as well.
Yeah, I already spoke to Mr. Speak a couple of weeks back, and--
I'm sorry.
-- he will be more than happy. Oh, yeah.
And he just got off the phone with him.
Coincidentally, we actually kind of are in similar, you know, field of work, so it was interesting to talk to him.
I grew up in an area where I had a friend that was practiced Shia Islam, and so we had a lot of conversations about that. The biggest differences for them is that they don't have a requirement to be there and pray on Fridays, so they don't have the big rush on Fridays that the other mosque does, so.
Yeah, so it's not obligatory. On the Sunni side, it is obligatory. But if you really want to know in 10 seconds, biggest difference between the two denominations, Shias believe that they should follow the family of the prophet. Sunnis believe they should follow the family and the friends of the prophet. Simple difference.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Therese. The recommendation is to affirm the Planning and Housing Committee's, Commission's action. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Wes and Tom, please vote.
Got it. Sorry.
And that passes 5-0. Congratulations, sir. Okay, moving on to administrative reports, the donation and sponsorship policy. Nicole McDaniel, the Assistant to the City Manager, will present this item. Nicole?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Well, our, ah, there it is. Thank you. Tonight, we are asking that you provide feedback and direction on our proposed donation and sponsorship policy. As an overview, this policy provides a standardized framework for accepting donations and corporate, community and corporate sponsorship citywide. The city, it will also, the policy will also offer the city some controls, like the right to reject, accept, or discontinue any donation or sponsorship. The policy also defines the difference between a donation and a sponsorship. It states that donations are a gift that could be used for general use and go to the area of greatest need, or could be restricted to a specific purpose, such as the purchase of an AED or books for the library. Donations are given freely without defined donor benefit. However, the city may choose to recognize donors through recognition events or acknowledgements. Sponsorships could be organized for programs, events, or capital projects, and unlike donations, sponsorships have defined benefits or recognition that corresponds to a specific sponsorship level. For example, an entity could sponsor a recreation program, either monetarily or in-kind, and in exchange, receive some sort of public recognition. Or for events, they could sponsor, they could be a sponsor for 4th of July and receive their name or logo on a banner. And for capital projects, someone could sponsor park features, such as a pump track or splash pad, and potentially receive their name on a plaque. Sponsorship levels will be adjusted as necessary to respond to factors such as inflation, event size, project size, or program duration. The policy also gives the city some discretion. It allows the city to accept, reject, or discontinue donations and sponsorships, as I mentioned previously. We will also only accept and maintain donations or sponsorships that are in the city's best interest, and the city will not accept donations or sponsorships from adult businesses as defined in the CMC. The policy also discusses age-restricted businesses, which are different from adult businesses. Age-restricted businesses require that customers be a certain age to purchase their products, such as alcohol or cannabis. The city reserves the right to implement additional review of requests for donations and sponsorship from these businesses, and programs, events, and projects sponsored by these businesses must primarily serve an adult audience. There are several benefits to adopting a donation and sponsorship policy. First, the policy provides a standard for managing external contributions. It clarifies the city's procedure around this topic, and it provides a foundation for future solicitation and engagement with potential donors and sponsors. So again, we're asking that you provide your feedback and direction on our proposed policy, and this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Comments or questions from my colleagues?
Yes. Thank you for this presentation. This has been an item, I think that we could, there's place for us to grow, because I think there's certainly, there are folks who want to help. There's probably local grown businesses that want to help, and I don't think we've fully formed a process by which we could accept that help, so I'm grateful that we're doing this. I have a little more, I'm curious about the system that we're building to accept donations. I'm in this world, and so there's steps like acknowledgement to the donor, there's the IRS forms or recognitions that they'll need to get for their tax purposes. Are we taking on any new staff, or is this going with, is this going to be like your job, or who's going to do this? And do we know all the steps that are necessary to accept donations legally? Is that all getting covered?
Yes. So the policy will be administered through the City Manager's office.
Okay. And then could you share a little bit more about what we mean by best interest? Like, will it be up for a council vote if there's like something? And I'm thinking specifically about, for instance, if a cannabis business wants to give us, you know, their community benefit, that, because they can't find somebody to give that community benefit, I would love to find a home for that, because there are a lot of places of need. But I understand the sensitivity to that business, and so I would, how do we flesh that out? Like, have we thought through what, how do we define best interest? Do they get recognized, or do they not get recognized because they are a sensitive business? Like, how does that work out?
I'm sorry, I'm just collecting my thoughts for a moment. So currently, I believe that we have accepted donations from a cannabis business, and those, I'm sorry, okay, and those donations are, do not come with any recognized donor benefit. And I believe that that funding has been funneled toward the senior center to ensure that the audience is primarily adults.
Oh, wonderful. So trying to match the business audience with--
They don't need it.
-- with the, with the, okay, wonderful. I'm also concerned about, for instance, and I don't see this happening necessarily, but what if, like, a politician wants to make a large donation to our 4th of July parade and wants special recognition on an election year for sponsoring the 4th of July parade? Like, how would we deal with that? Would that be one of those best interests, and we'd have--
So I'm just jumping in here really quickly on the best interest. So imagine that there is a business that makes a big sponsorship, and we have some sort of recognition for them, but later they're found to have committed fraud. We would have liked, we would like to have the ability to rescind that sponsorship acknowledgement, and that's one of those in the best interest of the city.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Can you, Dr. Tucker, can you speak to a sponsorship that seems politically motivated?
Sure. There's a, in the best interest of the city, if it were to be perceived, I think Dean could also chime in on this one as well, but if it's deemed to be perceived as a sponsorship in exchange for some sort of benefit, like a faster permit process, or there's some nexus between the sponsorship and some administrative action, we would, we would sort that out and make a more informed decision.
Okay. 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 Because I'm all in for us getting donations, but I certainly don't want to be used as a marketing tool. But I certainly don't want to be used as a marketing tool, if that's right, so.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, please.
So in the case of sponsorships, obviously, those are provided to receive recognition as opposed to donations. And so there's a different recognition that goes along with them. If the council doesn't want to provide sponsorships for political campaigns for large events, we could certainly build that into the policy. As it is, I don't know that it would be restricted, off the top of our heads, as we were thinking about that question. But that's the direction that we can receive from you if you don't want it. For donations, they don't come with commencement or recognition, because it's a donation, rather than a sponsorship.
I'd want us to flesh out a little bit more the sponsorship. And I think specifically about sponsoring a city event that then reaches all of our, it would be a great marketing tool, I'm being frank. And I would want us to protect the integrity of the city's nonpartisanship and not be hijacked in that way.
So you're thinking specifically for political?
Yes.
Type activities?
Sponsorships.
If that's the direction that council wants, we can build that into the policy. And I'm seeing a lot of nods across the table. Yeah, okay. So let us take a crack at that.
Thank you.
And we can, we can add that in. Really good feedback, thank you.
Yeah, very good questions and comments. Vice Mayor Casillas. Wes, do you have some?
I just had one thing. A, I'm really excited about this, because one of the things I thought that we did really well was the utility box wrapping project. And I had several businesses that said, look, they would love to find a way to sponsor. Now, they don't want it wrapped in their, you know, and they have their name on it, you know, have their name all over it or anything. But if they could just have donated by at the bottom, they would be perfectly happy. And I would love to see that expand throughout the community. So this is an opportunity that allows this to happen. And then, you know, frankly, I think the City Manager and I were talking at one point about whether or not that money could be funded through a nonprofit in order to make it, make it, you know, tax deductible. Love for, you know, that to be, I don't think I need to do anything special for that, but I agree with Vice Mayor Casillas that I would not like to see, you know, some events sponsored by a political party. And then that way, we weren't dividing, you know, the, God forbid, hopefully, at some point, we're not all divided. But I would certainly not want to just, you know, foment any things like that. But I like the idea of, if, you know, a local business wanted to give us $50,000 to really juice up the fireworks display, I'd love to honor them and, you know, acknowledge their sponsorship of an event in order to make it best for all of us. So I agree with that, just that one caveat's great. And my only question is, you know, how are we going to promote this? And are we going to pick specific programs to identify in order to try and get sponsorships?
So the way typically right now, Community Services runs sponsorship programs for each of their events. And we wanted to standardize that across all of the city, right? So the Fire Department also receives like AED donations, right? So all of that gets wrapped into this. There won't be a standardized recognition for sponsorships. For example, Fourth of July is very large, but like a rec program might be very small. So we, the intent is to give us some flexibility to scale up those sponsorships, especially for some things like CIP projects, if it costs a million dollars to build a pump track. You might have sponsorship levels that would correspond to that on a larger scale than something like a Fourth of July celebration. But those would be predefined based on the event and the department that's hosting them.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like the water feature at Citrus that was paid for by, you know, the Miguel's family, the Vasquez family. And they do have a little plaque, but it's, and I think they're perfectly happy with that. But if there's other folks that, I'd like to make sure we find a way to do so. But thank you, that's great.
Any other comments or questions?
I've got a reelection campaign coming up, I was wondering.
Enough, Tom. All right, Ms. McDaniel, do you feel like you have the appropriate feedback to work on the policy?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you for your presentation. No. All right, this next one, so yeah, back in October, I think it was, I had requested for the council to consider installation of the automatic timed gate at the entrance of the Sierra Bella parking lot, Sierra Bella Park parking lot. And then at that meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about, were there other parks that could also benefit from a gate based on what was going on in the park at night? So we're bringing this back. Moses Cortez, our Parks and Trails Manager, will present this item.
Yes, good evening, Council, and thank you. And as you mentioned, we did bring this for your review some months ago. And we've done some research, and we have some options for you guys to consider tonight. So we'll give you a little bit of background, some context on each option for both gate locking and restroom locking, review some options, and then be open for discussion. So today's ask is that council provide direction on the installation of automated timed gates at Sierra Bella Park at the entrance, installation of automated timed gates at some other locations that we've identified, and installation of auto-locking door systems at some of our park restrooms. So a little bit of background, the city has a total of 38 parks. Thirty parks of those, 30 of the parks have parking lots, which currently are not secured after hours. All the parks do have at least one restroom. Right now, we do currently have a security service that locks, manually locks the restrooms at four of our park locations. And the Park Rangers also lock five other additional park locations. And the remaining restrooms do stay open overnight. So with the Sierra Bella Park gate, we did do a little bit of research and did some field visits out there. So the securities, the issue that brought this up was there were some security concerns that were brought forward. The park is somewhat secluded up on the hill. And when you drive by, just with the way the elevation is and some of the landscape, you can't see the entire parking lot from the street. And there have been reports from some of the residents that live around the neighborhood that have reported loitering, or people sleeping in their vehicles after hours, or just the vehicle being parked there after hours. So we did a little bit of research and met with our fencing contractor out there. And we looked at some possible solutions. And a rolling gate was going to be the best option, just because if you look at that driveway, it is actually sloped. So an A, a typical A-frame gate would not really work well. It also would block our ADA access. There's an adjacent sidewalk next to it. So what we came up with was a 30-foot rolling gate with an automated opener, a steel track, and a traffic loop. So that way, if the, at closing, if there was still somebody in the park that was possibly going for a walk or playing basketball, that once the park closes, they could exit the parking lot. The electrical would be provided from the restroom building, so we would provide a conduit path to that gate opener. And the estimated cost for that overall project is $45,000. So as mentioned, there were some other sites that we had identified that either had existing gates or have kind of had similar activity. So we obviously just talked about Sierra Bella, Griffin Park also, kind of is hitting up on that hill, Stagecoach Park, it's kind of sunken, Parkview Park, Rock Vista Park, Butterfield on the west end, which is the dirt lot at the very end of the park, Promenade Park. And those were the parks that we identified in this study. And again, there's a little bit, the costs on there. And the overall cost, if we wanted to move forward on all of those parks, would be around $423,000 for a one-time cost. So parking, some options for the parking lots was option one, which is status quo. There's no financial impact. There's no security enhancements that are added. And again, the cost is, and there's no additional cost to our current operating budget. Option two is the installation of a parking lot at Sierra Bella Park. It does enhance the security to the Sierra Bella Park. There is a cost impact, which is a con, and is a one-time cost of $45,000. Option three is the installation of automated gates at seven park locations. It does also provide that additional security. There's a higher cost impact that comes with that, and the cost is $423,000 for a one-time cost. Also wanted to bring this to you for your consideration. We are currently locking the restrooms at some of our, we are locking the restrooms at some of our park locations. So we did a little research, and we reached out to CXT, who is the manufacturer of our pre-manufactured restrooms. They do provide an auto-locking system. This auto-locking system is good for approximately 60,000 strikes. And that is not 60,000 door openings, that's 60,000 strikes of the deadbolt, open and close. So that's twice a day. So it does have a fairly long runtime. It is, it's a sealed internal battery, so there's no electrical that needs to be run to it. You can program these locks to open and unlock to whatever your need is. The city currently is locking, utilizing our security services and our Park Rangers to lock eight other restrooms. And these units are 1,850 per door. So it'd be a one-time cost of estimated around $14,800, within annual savings of $96,000, because we'd be able to eliminate our security services that we're currently using. So some options for the restroom locking is option one, which is status quo. There's no financial impact, there's no security enhancements, and the additional cost is zero. Option two is to install the door locking at the nine park locations. It does eliminate the security service, which is a nice payoff. There is a risk of folks hiding in the restrooms. That is one thing that we do want to point out, that if they get savvy and understand what time the restrooms are locking, they could potentially stay in there overnight. It is a $14,000 one-time upfront cost, but we do have the elimination of the annual services that we're paying for our current security services of $96,000. Option three is to utilize our Park Rangers to go out and manually lock the restrooms. Again, they are locking some of the restrooms, so it would be adding those additional sites to them. There would be additional staff time that is required for this. And it would be a $27,000 additional staff time. But it would allow our Park Rangers to be more visible. Folks would see them out in parks with their lights on. It would allow us to clear the restrooms and make sure that we're not locking anybody in there and that the bathroom is secure. And it allows us to interact with the residents and some of our park users that are wrapping up around the close of time of the close of parks. So again, it's a $27,000 additional staff time, but we do eliminate that. They're $96,000 security contract. So it's a $69,000 annual savings. So again, just to kind of summarize, if you guys could give us some direction, we're open for questions on the installation of auto-locking timed gates at Sierra Bella Park, and also restroom locking options at our park locations. With that, we're open for any questions.
Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public on this?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for this item.
Mr. Fuller.
Don Fuller, I'm a resident. I have little doubt this has been already thought of, but I used to work with a lot of lawyers. I used to make a part of my living as an expert witness. So I've testified in a fair amount of court cases. And so things like this kind of raised my antenna for possible liability issues. I see that gate going back and forth. I'm just wondering, some kid gets caught in it, somebody's dog gets caught in it, somebody gets locked in the restroom at night. I'm just, I'm sure Mr. Durlis has covered all of this. I'm sure you're all way ahead of me on this, but I'm just curious. So.
What's your specific question, Mr. Fuller, please?
Well, my question is, I mean, I see, my nervousness on this sees lawsuits, potential lawsuits on this. With people getting injured, people getting locked in at night, somebody's dog gets caught in the automated gate. When the gate is working, and nobody's watching it, I just, that's all.
No, I think with the gate, I mean, you could do a lot of what-ifs on that. But I think the bathroom is, in my opinion, a better question than maybe we could get answered. Could somebody be locked in the bathroom and not be able to get out?
My understanding is that, no, you can always manually unlock the door from the inside. You just can't get in it from the outside.
And Mr. Cortez is nodding yes as well, Don. So that would be what I would be more concerned about, honestly. Anybody can get hurt at the park for a lot of different things, but I appreciate your thoughts on that.
I'm just concerned about.
Yeah, no, of course. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speaker cards? We're all good, okay. Let's bring it back to you guys. What are your thoughts? Yeah, I can start. As I mentioned, I brought this forward six months ago or so. And, you know, I made a comment that I think all of our parks are sacred, whether they're in a nicer neighborhood or a lower-income neighborhood, and that we need to make sure that all the shenanigans that are going off, going on in our parks, that we're trying to quell. And, you know, we have these municipal codes for a reason, you know? And I think they need to be enforced. At the time last year, 11 months out of the year, there was 90 calls for service at Sierra Bella Park, which is a ton for a little park. And then I asked the chief to run the data for this year for the seven parks mentioned. Promenade got 89 calls, Sierra Bella got 85, Butterfield got 25, Stagecoach got 17, Rock Vista got nine, Griffin got seven, and Parkview got four. Now, I think we'll jump out of you, two things, that Sierra Bella has almost as much as Promenade, which is crazy, because they're not even, even close to being similar in size. But then also Griffin only has seven. And you know there's stuff going on at Griffin every single night. But the problem is, nobody can see into the park. So I think if you had some houses that were just above it, I think they'd be reporting a lot. And, but there's already a gate at Griffin, so that one's being opened and closed manually. So, and that's consistently at the same time, pretty much.
I guess the question I would have for that would be, the cost that we have to send somebody there to open and close the gate? Would it be cheaper than installing a gate?
So the gate's already there at Griffin. That's one of the locations that our security service does, so they make their way to four locations. But yeah, so the park, that one closes dusk to dawn, just because once it does get dark, we don't want folks.
Right.
Getting out up top at the, all sorts of inferior.
That's my question, is if we were going to eliminate the security service, then we would have to have somebody else go out and close the, open and close the gate?
That would be the option of having our Park Rangers do it. It'd be some additional hours per night, but there would, we'd be able to eliminate that contractual security service.
Okay.
So I wanted a couple, I wanted to ensure consistency at all our parks. At the last meeting, it was brought up, sometimes it's closed at 8:30, sometimes it's closed at 10:30. Well, if the curfew's 10:30, the bathroom should not be closed before 10:30, right? So I just wanted to ensure consistency. I thought, hey, man, this is the era of utilizing technology. Why would we not use technology? Why would we require bodies to go up there? Now, there's some reasons that aren't bad reasons. Security, Rangers are at the parks, so that might be for further discussion. But I was thinking more for the parks that where routine patrol couldn't see it, or the citizens driving by certain parks, and they have no visibility into the parks. So how can they report anything? You know, they're not going to drive into the parks, the citizens aren't. So I would like to prioritize the parks where you can't see it on the normal, just driving by it. Nobody can see it. Police can't see it, residents can't see it. So who knows what's going on in that park? Is it going to turn into a homeless encampment? Is there illegal activity occurring? So as we look at all seven, off the top of my head, I don't really think all seven need to have automatic gates. Promenade, obviously, is a huge park, it's going to get a lot of people there. It's, there's a lot of nonsense that goes on there. But everybody can see it, so you would easily report it. But some of these other parks, maybe, maybe Stagecoach, I can't remember. I think there's a swell there, so you can't see the parking lot. You can't, certainly probably couldn't see it from Coradon, and you probably only see a part of it from Stagecoach. So it's kind of similar to Sierra Bella. So I don't know, I'd like to get, hear your guys' additional thoughts, if you have any.
I have thoughts.
Tony looks really excited to jump in over here.
Go ahead, Tom, I'll go after you.
I've got something, too.
So I think with the bathrooms closing, with the automation, is a no-brainer. I think you should do that for everything, including my house. And then, and then with the gates, I think you take them as problem children. So when they become problem children, like Sierra Bella or Promenade, and you get a lot of calls, that's when you pull the trigger on those. So I know you're proposing seven, but maybe only three or four, kind of, you were going down that path.
Or maybe just do a couple this year, a couple next year, a couple after that, based on that.
Yeah, and maybe two this year and work out the bugs. Because one of the bugs I see is the gate closes and a car gets trapped in. So is there a sensor that would open it from?
They'll be installing a traffic loop.
Like downstairs?
On the inside.
Okay. So yeah, try it for a couple parks. If it works, go forward. If it doesn't, then at least we know with two gates, right? Because it sounds like the two parks were the biggest troublemakers. And I use the word troublemaker loosely. And then with the bathrooms, lock them all. Go ahead, Tony.
Here's my, my take, and it is, I think, like, I think I agree that. Here's my, my, my take in it is I, I think, like, I think I agree that the locking bathrooms are, that's easy. I mean, save money and, and we can actually do more, especially in the problem parks where we have, you know, some issues, and it'll allow us to actually to open them up. And I know that I get complaints from folks that are mad that they can't use a bathroom on time or, you know, young mom or kid can't use the bathroom. So I, I like that idea, I think it's great. The fence-wise, I think Sierra Bella is a no-brainer and like to go forward with that. I think looking at the, the other list of the seven parks, like Promenade, there's parking on, on every side. I think if people couldn't park in the parking lot, they'd just park on the street. So I, I don't think that we would get much, much out of there, and frankly, it's all visible from the street. And imagine that PD would, you know, with all those calls, there's probably other reasons for folks to be there. Butterfield stands out as a place that not a lot of people go. There's, you know, I know that we had a, an RV that was bouncing around town that stuck it at Butterfield for a while. And I think that would be a good one, you know, especially that, that west parking lot that's really secluded and, you know, folks get back there. Stagecoach, that, that would be an interesting one, just because you're right, you can't see everything. The other ones.
And you're not, I'm not sure. You can't see everything? I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think Griffin's a no-brainer. We're, we're locking that already, and, and we've only, we've only had seven calls. It would be a, a no-brainer to do that, just because it's, as Jim said, you, you can't see anything there and, and folks would be going there. The rest, I'm not, I'm not, I would not be in favor of, of spending the money on, unless there was some other extenuating circumstance that there, you know, I'd imagine that if we have a, a place where there, we have issues anyway, that, you know, PD's going to be going by and looking and may prioritize those places where you, you can't see easily. But they, so my recommendation would be to, to do just Sierra Bella and, and Butterfield and, and then the, the, the locks.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Moses, what were the, what were the, what were the parks that you want, that you had suggested for the automatic locks? It wasn't all of them, I thought it was just four of them.
So it's the ones that we're currently locking right now, that's between our security services and our park ranger staff. So that's going to be Parkview, Rock Vista, Sierra Bella, Ontario, Brentwood, Tehachapi, Border, Kellogg, and Butterfield.
Okay, and which, which, and those, all eight of those were, were the ones that you were talking about for the electric locks?
Installing the auto-lock systems.
And you had said that those locks are rated for sixty thousand strikes?
That's what, that's what CXT.
What type of warranty do we have for those? What is that, but what type of warranty is that? Does that mean that they'll come out and replace it if it's two thousand strikes or?
They didn't give us the details on the, on the warranty portion. I reached out to him to get some details on it. He did give me the price, provided me that there, because it was like, I was trying to figure out if we had to run electrical forms, I could factor that in. And he did say they have a sealed battery, but he didn't get into the details of the warranty. And I'd be more than happy to reach out and figure out what that is.
And who installs those, us or them?
We install them ourselves. So it's, it's like for like.
Yeah, I, I would like to know what that warranty is, because, you know, eighteen hundred dollars a lock is pretty dang expensive. And if there's no, like, free replacement up to six years or whatever, you know, or sixty thousand strikes or something, you know, I, I'd like to know how, how durable these things are, because I could imagine that somebody's going to be fiddling with them, especially trying to figure that out. As, as, as far as the gates, I'm, I'm on the fence, no pun intended. I like the idea of having more active invisible park rangers, because I think that that's a better deterrent, especially at a park like Griffin Park where the gate is closed, there's nobody driving up there, but there's people walking up there that are hanging out. And I would like to have a park ranger drive up there and see what's going on and, you know, discourage people from congregating at the park, if you will, after hours. I don't know, that was going to be my question, is, is a park like Griffin, during the evening, after it's closed and the gate is locked, at some point, does a park ranger open the gate, drive up there and see what's going on?
So we're currently not. Once we do close the gate, we're not going up there unless there's a report. And if it's after our hours of shift, then it does trickle over to PD to respond.
But they're only going up there if there's a call and, and they have time to, to do it. I mean, that's probably not a high priority call, I would imagine. But nobody's driving up there after hours when the sun's down, trying to see what's going on.
No, because.
There's nobody being proactive like that.
Yeah, because we're closing the gate at, at, at sunset.
Right, so I, I don't, I don't distinguish the difference between electric gate and a. Well, but we currently have a gate. And, and if we expanded the, the park rangers, you'd have a little bit more. Visible, well, that's what they're asking to change, right? I'm assuming.
Yes.
You'd have to add more hours.
We'd add three, approximately three hours to our ranger staff. So it'd be some additional hours and be able to eliminate the security services.
Right, and either way, by eliminating the security services, there's a savings. It's either ninety-six thousand or sixty-nine thousand or whatever. Whatever, whatever the numbers are. So either way that there's a savings, one of them gives us extra hours with the park rangers, so that there's more visibility. I like that idea versus putting a gate that nobody's going to go up there anyway, regardless. And there's already a gate there. It just means that somebody doesn't have to close it. But I think that that's something that could be worked into their schedule. I, I like the idea of the locks. I just want to know about the warranty, because I don't want to have to buy a lock a year at eighteen hundred dollars a pop per door or whatever it works out to be, because I can imagine that there's going to be a lot of people that are messing with those things. So are these things something that we could rebuild, or is it, you just got to replace it? And if you got to replace it, is it a warranty or prorated or? I'd like to know that, because that's a pretty expensive lock.
Okay, yeah, and I can reach out to him and ask him that. The, the pictures they showed me, they're, they're fairly beefy. I'm assuming they've probably had this experience at other agencies, you know.
I'm, I'm sure that they do, for other municipalities that are doing the same thing that we're trying to accomplish. I just want to know what those answers are before I can, I can do that. But as far as the gates go, I, I'm okay doing it at Sierra Bella, just because I want to try it on one, but I don't think that all of them need it at this point. It's my opinion, until we get some more data.
Yeah, Ms. Casillas?
So I agree with Mr. Dario. You can file that one on, in that record book you keep. But I do think that you're getting five different variations of like, what we agree with. So I agree with, with. Here's, here's where I differ. So the premise of, of Councilmember Dario's argument, I totally agree with, which is, I'm comfortable with moving forward with Sierra Bella getting a gate. And, you know, the community's been asking for it. I'm comfortable with us getting more data, seeing how that works out at that park. I don't think the calls for service are probably accurate to the activity at the parks. You know, the Promenade Park getting eighty-nine calls and Sierra Bella getting eighty-five. It's probably more indicative of like how active the community is around those parks. Griffin Park, or, yeah, Griffin Park getting seven, yeah, there's all sorts of stuff. We're trying to activate it, and that's helped. But a gate only keeps out vehicles. It doesn't keep out activity. And to Councilmember Dario's point, you know, there's still people doing things up there after hours, and we are not accessing that park after hours because the gate is installed. Now, I don't advocate for us to remove the gate at Griffin Park, but I don't think that an automated gate is going to change how that park is being used currently. You know, the, the fence that's there now and an automated one, we're just going to spend forty-five thousand dollars on a gate at Griffin Park, and the exact same activity is going to be happening at that park, because it's accessible, just go around it. Like it's, so I don't think that we should go through and put a, a gate at every single park. But I'm totally comfortable moving forward with Sierra Bella, seeing how it works out there. Hopefully, that helps the community feel safer. Hopefully, it does drive down activity and we can revisit the gates everywhere else. Now, to Councilmember Dario's point about ranger activity, I too like that. I, I would prefer our rangers being at the parks, but this is not with the gates. This is for the, for the locks. For the locks. I, now, I understand the closing, like, using automated locks and how that can really allow for, and in particular, for these restrooms to be accessible all at the same time, at the same hour when they're supposed to be accessible. I'm thinking about our folks who use the parks early in the morning, and our park rangers just can't get to that park in time, and they, you know, it's supposed to be unlocked. So I like the automated locks for the suggested locations, but I, I think that this is an opportunity for our park rangers to be more visible at our parks. So I, I do have concerns. I don't think there'll be many folks or any, but I, I think it would still require someone to go and check, make sure that there's no one in there after they're locked automatically. So that's my variation, but.
What do you think about?
I think it's helpful.
It sounds like there was some consistency with Sierra Bella.
Yes.
So what if we just do Sierra Bella with the bathrooms and the gate? Evaluate that for six months and come back and readdress this to see if it's working or if these locks are breaking after a week, if people are getting trapped, dogs are getting killed by gates.
I mean, if, if, if we're just talking about the gate at Sierra Bella, I think.
There's consensus on the gate.
Yeah, there's, there's consensus. I, I'd like to move forward with the, with the bathroom locking at all the places that Mr. Cortez has suggested, just because I think it's going to save us time and it's going to save us money.
Yes, but I think, it seems like we have to do a little more due diligence on what the warranty is on those locks.
I'm assuming if someone's paying eighteen hundred dollars for a lock, they probably have a pretty good warranty. I mean, I would assume that, that we'll, we'll figure that out, and we're not awarding that tonight. But we're just going forward with that they'll go out and get a bid. But I, I like to get the information back as well, but I, I would like, if that turns out to be a good, they're selling eighteen hundred door locks, eighteen hundred dollar door locks, that they, they work for a period of time. But I would like to go forward and do all the ones that he said, just because I, I think that Mr. Cortez knows what would not only save us money, but, but can, convenience for the public.
Yeah, and maybe we can get economies of scale for purchasing all, all of them at the same time.
Hey, Moses, I had one other question. The, the pending gate that's going in at Sierra Bella, like, is the city able to open it remotely? Like, if they wanted to open it to let the police car in? How would a police car get in?
We could put a Knox on it if we needed to.
And fire, all have a key on their rigs to open all the Knox gates or padlocks.
Okay. Well, then never mind.
So did anybody not like my idea, just do one park and see how it works? And that includes the locks, too? And then we can evaluate to see and get more information on warranties, but at least we can see if it's going to work.
I'd like to save the, try and, try and, I mean, we can save ninety-six thousand dollars right now.
I'd like to do all the bathroom locks, because I, I hear it from citizens that the city didn't get there fast enough to unlock the doors in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, I've had.
That's the consistency part.
I've had panic calls from, you know, from young moms that are, that are at El Cerrito that literally are, they, their kids are peeing on the ground because they can't use the bathroom or, and, and I, you know, puts a lot of pressure on staff to be there. We're either opening up too early, and then we have homeless in there. And so I think there's, I mean, I, I think it's just that we're having an automatic door lock is not going to preclude the rangers from going to the site and checking. I mean, I, you know, lived down the street from Santana Park for years, and I would see the, the rangers going into those places. So I, I'm, I'm, I think that, then the door locking thing is a, is a no-brainer for me, but. With your question answered, of course.
I, I, I think that Councilmember Casillas is right, that if we're going to do it, let's, the economy is a scale, it's the best way to do it. So I would like to get those answers first, because I, I really want to consider more rangers versus automatic door locks.
I think Councilmember. I think you're so right, that we should be getting. I'm just now enjoying this. No, so can we just move forward with the gate for, for Sierra Bella? And then see what the, the cost is for all of the? Yes, that's my motion. I moved.
Second.
To approve.
Third.
The gate. Did that make sense?
I think so. Just move to approve a gate at Sierra Bella only and nothing else.
And to, and, and we would like to see what the cost would be for, for locks.
I think we already provided the cost for the locks.
Oh, and that's, oh, and, yes, it was a warranty that we wanted to know more about.
You want to know more about the warranty before we purchase those? Okay.
Warranties come back in a good way that we.
Is there, is there, just as a suggestion, is there a desired warranty that if it met that, that we could proceed? If it got at least a five-year warranty, then you'd be comfortable thus proceeding? Or some arbitrary number of years that would be good enough?
Ten years, five years.
Well, you'd have to run it by Dario and then get Jackie to agree with them and.
You, you know what? I have no point of reference on what sixty thousand strikes is. I, I really don't, but.
Two per day.
I, I get that, but I would imagine that, that there are, is a ton of information out there that they've designed these things for other municipalities. And I just want to know, what are some of the problems?
So we've, we've had a motion and a second to do the gate only at Sierra Bella, and then they'll come back to us with your answers on the, on the locks. Yeah, that's fair.
I think I, I'm okay with that.
Please vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Moses.
Waiting for it. There we go. All right, and that passes five. Moving on to nine point three, the approval of various actions establishing the city's intention to amend its agreement with Calpers to provide fourth-level nineteen fifty-nine survivor benefits for sworn police officers. Ms. Lori Sessin, our chief talent officer, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. To recap, this is, as you mentioned, you just read the title. This is adopting the second reading of the ordinance to enact the fourth-level survivor benefits for our police sworn employees. But one additional action we have before you tonight that we need to make a verbal note about is we're also amending Resolution twenty-four dash one eighteen. That is the resolution establishing benefits for the city's executive employees. The police chief is in that, that group, and because he is a sworn police officer, he will also receive the fourth-level nineteen fifty-nine survivor benefit. So the resolution before you, twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine, will amend that executive resolution to add that benefit for the police chief. And with that, we would recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Sessin. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Any comments or questions from my colleagues?
No, so moved.
Second. Wes and Tom, please vote. All right, it passes five. Legislative matters, item ten point one, ordinance amending section two point zero four dot zero six zero V of the Corona Municipal Code to clarify the city manager's workers' compensation settlement authority. Does any council member want a staff report on this item?
I have just one, one question and maybe a slight change.
Okay.
So yes.
Do you want Mr. Durlis to present this item?
No, I just have.
You want to ask a question?
I just have a one, just one question for, for number three that, that we would give automatic. And I get the fact that if, if this is something that, that we can't change, and it's, it's a done deal, and, and, you know, the, we have a great legal team, and I'm fine with that. I would like to find something that comes back to us at some point to tell us what's going on in case we see that there's, there's a pattern or we're having the same issue. I don't want it to be completely out of our sight.
Sure.
And, and I'm not saying that it needs to come back to us for approval, but at least maybe to get a, a, a list of those, a, a report on, maybe on quarterly of, of.
So we provide, yeah, we provide you with the quarterly litigation report, both the general litigation report and the workers' comp litigation report. So within that workers' comp litigation report, we can call this out specifically and provide you with information about what items, what if any permanent disability approvals have been approved at the staff level.
Yeah, that's the only, that's my only suggested change if, if you're all okay with that. The rest is fine. I, I think it's a good idea, but I, I think it, from a policy perspective, it'd be good for us to, to have some ice, some visibility with it.
Do you want that language in the ordinance or just my commitment to provide you with that information on a quarterly basis?
No offense to you, and I know you're, you're going to try and be here forever, but I'd like it to be, to be in it.
Okay. Do you want to move on and let me come up with a sentence to add to it?
To move that, a sentence would be that, that they're. Okay.
Well, hold on. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Now you can do your thing.
Okay, well, I guess we, are we going to take a?
You guys can move on, and maybe if we can then just bring it back, just give me a second to draft a sentence to add to it. That way, we don't have to bring the item back for another first reading.
Perfect, so I would move that we accept this as written, except for one small change in item number, I think it was number three.
It is an ordinance, so we have to.
Okay, so introduced by title and waifull reading of the attached ordinance thirty-six point, I'm sorry, thirty-four point one six, a first reading of the ordinance amending section two point zero four, point zero six zero V, duties of chapter two point zero four, city manager, the Corona Municipal Code to authorize city manager to approve. manager to approve stipulated awards of permanent disability and related claims and expenses where there are no regal, reasonable legal discretion to pursue arguments or defense that would lower the amount owed, following a review and recommendation by the city attorney. And my sentence would be to have a quarterly litigation report that would detail when that, that was exercised.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote. And that passes 5-0. Let's see, regional updates. Oh, I'm up first. RTA meeting, Riverside Transit Agency from my board meeting on April 24th. I think the only thing that I think you would care about, we're excited to announce that the youth ride free pro, promotion has been extended all the way through the end of the year of 2026, thanks to the board who voted for that. The promotion is available to individuals 18 and under and will continue through December 31st, 2026. The offer is available on all fixed routes and Go Micro buses. That's awesome. All right, moving on to update from Councilmember Speak on RCTC Western Programs Meeting.
Just three items. We awarded a contract to Railpros for $2 million for flagging for our rail projects, and then a maintenance contract to a company to take care of the I-15 Smart Freeway project, which is now going to be open, I think, this weekend. It'll be an opportunity to see how that works. And then last, we did a, a toll and revenue study. We're authorizing to look at the Southern Extension for the 15 Project to develop an investment-grade study for progressive divine build, and we awarded that contract to, to StanTech. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. And we have another update from Councilmember Speak on the Southern California Association of Government Sky, General Assembly Meeting of May 1st.
I think this will be the mayor's favorite, that I did not go. My, my wife was injured, and, and I, I wasn't able to go to the meeting, so.
All right, big hugs to Mary.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's see. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards in the public on regional updates?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. City attorneys' reports and comments, Mr. Durle? City manager reports and comments, Mr. Ellis?
No comments. Thanks, Mayor.
Any of my colleagues have any comments?
Yes.
Ms. Casillas?
I wanted to report out on WR COGS meeting. I didn't get my regional meeting in, sorry. Just wanted to share that it was presented to us, the IRN Annual Report, and there's two things I want to highlight. First, that this was the first full year for the IRN program operations, and that with the projects in pipeline, they will result in an $8.5 million in energy savings for the partnering agencies within WR COGS. So IRN is an energy agency that brings back dollars into our communities. These are, these are dollars that were already, that are being paid for by our residents, and we're traditionally being sent to LA County. And with the formation of IRN, we can pull those dollars into our community and save on energy costs. So it's a good thing. And the second thing I wanted to note is that I'm continuing my coffee with your councilmember Saturdays in May, 9:30 to 10:30 across District 1 in different parks. This last Saturday, we met at Promenade Park and had the pleasure of meeting eight residents whom I have never met before, and it was really great to hear from them about their, the issues that they see and the things that they, are most important to them. And it's just really great to have the opportunity to meet residents, so I want to encourage you, if you are available, to meet me this Saturday, 9:30 to 10:30, and we will be at Griffin Park, which is a dog park, so you can bring your pup, and it'll be fun for us all. Thank you.
Good job. Anybody else? Any other comments?
I was wondering if you're bringing your puppy.
Yeah, Shaw will be there. She's not a puppy, though. She's pretty big.
They're always puppies.
I, I didn't have anything. I know that there's a future agenda item. I don't know if you want to do that before.
We're going to get that as soon as.
Before you adjourn.
Yeah, before I adjourn.
Okay.
Mayor Steiner and I had the opportunity to go to the Hundred Mile Club, and the chief ran a lap, which I was impressed, because I couldn't run a lap. And the Hundred Mile Club organizers tried to get the mayor to lead the congregation in song, and he said no.
I don't do rap.
So I was a little disappointed in that. I was looking forward to rapping Steiner. I saw a mask, and, and that's that. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I, I just want to note that today we went to the grand reopening of the Senior Center. They did a beautiful job of redoing it. I wanted to thank our, our team for doing that. And very important to me, and very cool, we, we opened the city's first bocce court. And Councilmember Richens and I got to play a little bit, and I wanted him to feel good, so I let him win. But very, very excited to, to have a great game that's part of my heritage at the, at the, at the Senior Center. So great job. Thank you.
It was great to, to watch Tony not lose, lose his mind as Tom beat him twice in a row, so.
All right, moving on. So we have future agenda items that we have to decide. A majority of us will determine whether we want to put staff to work on an agenda item for the future. We have one that's been requested by Councilmember Speak, and that is additional modified exhaust enforcement ideas. Councilmember Speak, would you please introduce your request for our consideration?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, as of, over the past few years, I, I get a lot of, you know, complaints. There have been, you know, from a couple of particular individuals, but it has, I have noticed it in other parts of the city, that cars are just getting louder. And I wanted to see if there's some additional, is there anything else that we could be doing to, to enforce this? I know that it's not a, a common, you know, a common sight in the, the city of Corona, and I, I didn't, I just wanted to get some more information to see if there was anything else we could do. I know that, you know, where I, I lived for, for 21 years, there was a jerk around the corner from me that would, you know, get on his motorcycle every, every summer evening, but, you know, you kind of expect it after a while. But I, I experienced a little bit of this with a, a couple of folks in my district to kind of share what they were going through, and I thought it would be a worthwhile exercise to see if there was any other options for us in, in enforcing this.
I mean, I, I think it's pretty evident that the community is, is very annoyed by all these loud vehicles. I just wonder how it's going to be enforced. You know, you'd literally have to have a police officer.
That's the question.
Yeah.
I mean, I, and there, I, I want to see if there's other options that doesn't include, you know, having an officer on every corner, which can't happen. But I know that there's other communities that are finding different ways to, to enforce it, and I'd like to know, get a report back on what those would be, if there, if there are options.
Yeah, okay. Any, you guys good with that?
I mean, I just.
Just get a report?
Sure, I mean, sure. I don't, I'm annoyed by it, too. I just, I, I don't know what creative solutions there are that are enforceable. And so I don't know if it's a wise use of resources to send staff on a wild goose chase for a thing that I don't think exists that is enforceable outside of police.
What if we had something in place, though, and the officer was just patrolling Green River, and a car drove by him that blew his eardrums out, and now he has possibly something to enforce?
But they'd do that already, don't they? Don't we do that?
Yes, there are three vehicle codes already in place that address modified exhaust, and we enforce all three of those. An additional municipal code would not add to any type of enforcement operations that we don't already have access to at this point. We've issued 64 citations for modified exhaust over the last year. I know when you hear that, it's not a lot, but some of those modified vehicle code sections require decibel readings. Some are just simple manufactured adjustments by the owner of the vehicle. But to be frank, this is a legislative issue. I appreciate what you're saying, Council, Vice Mayor Casillas, because this is very difficult for officers to enforce, and manufacturers are now installing exhaust modifications at, at that, at the, at the manufacturer, right? So when a car leaves a lot, and all a owner of a vehicle has to do is flip a switch, they have like three different modification options for exhaust, they are technically not in violation of the vehicle code because they're not, they haven't tampered with that. So they may have, be in violation of the decibel part of the vehicle code. But to your point, I really want our officers out there enforcing vehicle code violations that save lives. And this, while this is a nuisance, and we will continue to do our enforcement, it's hard to invest a lot of time in sitting in a location where it's random chance of a modified exhaust coming by that's not going to save a life.
Yeah.
Okay, I saw a speaker card. Mr. Morgan, you know a little something about exhausts?
Hello? This one? This, here we are. It, it is enforced in a lot of communities, and it's enforced in a way that I don't think would sit with our police department very well. Basically, it's completely, it's completely subjective. They just go, yeah, you have loud exhaust, and they send you to the ref. And so there's no objective standard for any of it, you know, and so it's not like anybody's sitting there with a decibel meter and to say, well, it's too loud. What you're really talking about is behavior. You're talking about these dumbasses with the pop and bang tunes, and they just flip a switch, and they go to an alternate calibration, and they're pa-pa, 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 down Ontario. I know exactly who you're talking about. So it's that. It's, they could be quiet, flip a switch, and it plays with the cam timing, and pa-pa, 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 all the way down the road. They turn off, it's called a decel fuel cutoff. They disable the decel fuel cutoff so that it bangs, you know, that's, that's the ones. Trust me, right where, right where we live, we get it going both ways. But it's behavior. It's not, it's not equipment, you know? And so you can take that same car, a lot of the cars you just drive around, you can be loud, you can be quiet, you know? And, you know, it's, it's almost like what the chief's talking about, where you can flip a switch, you know? So to be chasing after that, or you could do like what some of the Beach City is doing, just go, oh, you look like you're modified, you're getting a ticket. You look like you're modified, you're getting a ticket. And they just, just kill them all, get let God sort them out. This is basically what it does. Send them all to the ref. And basically, it's, it's, you know, it's not, not great. It's not, it's not, it's not the way we generally operate.
What does the ref do?
Can you explain what the ref is?
The state referee.
The like, are they in?
It's, yeah, so if you get reft, like, they go over your car with like a fine-toothed comb in terms of emissions and equipment, and whether it's too loud. But they still don't really have an objective standard for the exhaust. So it's, it's kind of chicken shit. I got a, I got a too loud exhaust on the freeway cruising at 55 miles an hour in my Honda Civic, you know? But I've never, you know, I don't know, maybe the chief can talk about it, whether anybody's ever been pulled over in a Harley for loud exhaust. Seems like they get a blanket exemption, to your point, you know? It's, it's, it's a different thing. So I'm cruising along, minding my own business at 10:30 in the morning, and get a too loud ticket. It's, it's whether they feel like writing a ticket for whatever they feel like writing a ticket for. It's not really, I, I wouldn't think it's ethical or professional, but, you know, some, some officers and some departments, you know, end up doing it that way. So it just, I, I would, seems like you want to regulate the behavior, not the equipment. So thank you very much.
Yeah, it, it just seems so hard to.
Yeah, I, I mean, so I'll, I'll read my work, my, with the scope of the work I'm asking for, and it's not for an ordinance. It's basically, report back to council, A, to review existing enforcement techniques, number citation, whether or not additional equipment is needed to cite under the vehicle code. Additional ideas that will lead to reduced number of modified exhaust in the city. I think the chief answered two of these, and, and if you guys don't feel like that there's any, anything else that can be brought on, you know, it's, it's majority rules, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that after hearing the chief, that we probably don't need to waste our staff's time, although you're, I don't disagree with your sentiment at all. I mean, it's really frustrating, but it sounds like we already got three, three opportunities to cite, that let's, let's do, let's do our best to cite, right?
Yeah, I'm a, same. It's annoying. I wish we could write ordinances and change behaviors, but that's not so. Or write reports that then could lead to writing ordinances that could, so anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm a no, but it's not that I don't, I, I agree with, with the feeling that it's annoying, and I, yeah.
I'm a yes. I, I think there could be research, and I think there could be something other cities are doing that we don't know that we could discover. So I'm a yes.
Need to hear from Tony.
Well, I may or may not be part of the problem with my motorcycle, and perhaps some louder cars than normal, but I actually agree with Mr. Morgan. It's a behavior issue. It's not, not much that we could do to curtail that, but beyond what they're already doing. And if something new and whiz-bang comes up in the world of law enforcement, I believe that our chief would tell us. But I don't think there's anything new and whiz-bang, so I'm a no. I'm a no.
Okay. Copy that? Okay, we're going to get ready to close here. So I'm sure most of you know Jerry Soper passed.
Can I quickly read for the record this sentence that I've added?
Yes.
Just for the record, and I'll get a copy of this, this city clerk. So at the end of subsection two, I have written, "The city attorney shall provide a written report to the city council, no less often than quarterly, which documents when the city manager has approved such stipulated awards."
Okay. Now we good? Okay. So Jerry Soper passed away. Jerry, I'm sure most of you knew him. He worked for the independent newspaper, the Press Enterprise. Then he became a freelance photographer. He covered local sports, events, high school, everything, and many other stories for like 50 years in this community. I got to know Jerry when, when I was working for the fire department. He would show up on calls. I got to know him. His, one day, his police and fire scanner broke, and he apparently couldn't afford to buy a new one, and the paper wouldn't buy him one. And he relied on those scanners to get the notification of emergency, so he could get, you know, respond to the scene and get his photographs for the newspaper. So our firefighters, we bought him a new scanner, and we took it down to, I think it was the Press Enterprise. And his supervisor came out and said that, you know, the employees can't accept any gifts. And we're like, well, yeah, but this is like, this is your job, you know? And he says, well, the only way he could do it is if he gave you guys something of equal cost. So, so one day, Jerry, Jerry shows up at Fire Station One with a cappuccino maker, and, and he gave it to us, and on the cappuccino maker, it said, it had engraving that said, "To Jerry Soper, thank you for everything, the Oakland Raiders." And so we had that in the station for, for many years. I don't know if we ever used, had any cappuccino, but, but Jerry, he would show, he would call Station One or wherever I was at on a pretty regular basis, and, and ask if our crew could change out his bandages from, you know, or do some wound care, because this guy was always getting hurt. So of course, we always did. And one day, he called me and said, hey, I got gored by a bull the other day. Can I stop by? Can you guys help me out? So we said, yeah. And so it turns out, he was, he was at the Norco rodeo doing his photographing, and he wanted to get that perfect shot, so he got up right up against the cage and got his head inside the, the barrier, and this bull wasn't having any of this. So he gored Jerry, right? Jerry had his camera here, and he gored the camera and smashed his face pretty bad. So that was just one example of, of the trouble he was always getting himself into. He would stop by the fire stations on a pretty regular basis with pictures, great pictures of action photos of our firefighters and whoever was in the photo. Jerry would say, hey, you know, do you want this picture? And the firefighters would go, yeah, I'd love it. Give me 20 bucks. Every time. And you had no choice but to fork over 20 bucks. He, Jerry took photos for the Oakland Raiders, and he was, he was allowed on the field for every game, no matter where it was. And about 10 years ago, he asked me if I wanted to go to a game with them and carry all of his camera gear on the sidelines. And of course, I jumped at that chance. I'd never been on a NFL sideline before. So as, as we get off the plane in, in Oakland, there's fans dressed in Raider gear throughout the airport, and as we were walking by, they were all screaming his name. And I'm like, what is going on right now? So then we got to the stadium, and the game's starting, and we're walking around the stadium over and over and over, and he's taking pictures. I'm carrying all his crap. And, and the fans were screaming the entire game when we walked by. Scoop, scoop! And I'm just like, you know, this guy's kind of a dork back home, but he's, he's a frickin' legend in Raider Nation, and, but he's also a legend in Corona. And, you know, up until his passing, Jerry would text me every Friday night, asking me, you know, what's going on in the city that I can photograph this weekend? So that, that went on up until the end, and we're going to miss you, Jerry. So we're going to close our city council meeting in memory of Jeremiah "Scoop" Soper. And with that, we will see you next council meeting, May 21st. And with that, we will see you next council meeting, May 21st, at 6:00 PM.